The City of Halton City is called to order. The time is 7:35. We welcome you ladies and gentlemen here tonight and those who are watching over HCTV. We're always delighted when we have citizens taking part and are aware of what their elected officials are doing. So, welcome to our council meeting tonight. Councilmember Phil Jennings will lead our invocation, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Stand, please.
Let's pray. Our dear heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity together here tonight to conduct the business of Halton City. Lead, guide, and direct us tonight in the decisions that we make, that they may be just and fair to all people involved. We ask these things in the name of your only Son, Jesus Christ, our Lord and Savior. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to your beloved, for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have three presentations to be made tonight. Number one is a proclamation for a national art contest, and I'd like to ask Ms. Sierra Saldana to come forward and join me at the lectern, please.
Turn around here so everyone will be able to see you. We are very proud of this young lady. If you've driven along Airport Freeway at Beach and look over to the south of the freeway, you'll see a big giant billboard. This young lady designed that billboard and won a national art contest in doing that. And we're very pleased to present this proclamation to her tonight. Whereas Eastman Kodak, Tommy Hilfiger, and Shine have announced Sierra Saldana as the first-place winner of Stop Violence, Start Art Picture Your Future Contest. And whereas contestants from across the United States were invited to create photo collages that portrayed a peaceful world. And whereas the category that Sierra entered depicted harmony in neighborhoods every day and peace among the races. And whereas, as a first prize winner, her winning collage is currently being displayed on the billboard at Beach at 121. Now therefore, I Calvin White, Mayor of Halton City, and on behalf of the entire council, do hereby publicly commend Sierra Saldana for her accomplishments and extend our deep appreciation and best wishes for continued success in her future endeavors.
Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen.
Sierra, would you like to address this group today?
I want to say thank you to God for giving me the talent and the ability that he's given me. And I want to say thank you to my family and my friends who support me. And the support that's been behind me all the way is wonderful, and I just thank you for that.
We are, again, very proud of this young lady and very happy to have her here today. Our second presentation tonight is the Community Pride in Motion Committee. David Harper, front and center, please.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing me to speak. The city, uh, this is about the Community Pride in Motion. September 25th, the city council in place at that time unanimously approved the formation of a committee to study and find out what the citizens of Halton City threw a questionnaire on our water bills, what we, the citizens thought, or rather, the residents thought about prioritizing the needs and as it went to the appearance of the Halton City. And what we found out was, as you see before you, the council, how they prioritized that. Streets were, and their appearance were of utmost importance with litter being number two and public building appearance, parks, follow those up. The committee was made up of Public Works Representatives, police, fire, parks, and Keep Halton City Beautiful. And councilmember John Patino, I believe, was on that. And I would also like to tell this council that the staff members that were on that committee were enthusiastic. A lot of good communication came out of that. And our last meeting was August 1st, and we were told to cease and desist our operation. But before you have those recommendations, what the citizens felt, and Diane Branson was the chairperson, and Wayne Moody, who just passed out the findings to you. We hope that you will take those recommendations and take them in heart. And I challenge you and all the residents of Halton City to continue to raise the bar, making the quality of life in Halton City better. And with that, the committee has disbanded, and we thank you for the opportunity to serve, and thanks for listening to you.
If you would, wait at the lectern. Diane and Wayne, would you come forward, please, and you don't want to? Okay. Over the last week, I wrote each one of you a personal thank you note from the mayor. Go ahead and join him if you don't mind. Thanking you for your participation, and I want you to know, your efforts, I want to say publicly, your efforts on this Community Pride in Motion were deeply appreciated. You did a lot of research. You spent a lot of time and effort, and we appreciate that. You developed, created a lot of synergy. You brought a lot of people together and got them focused in a particular direction. And you opened dialogue. And those three things are invaluable. Halton City is a better community because of what you did. And I just want to publicly say thank you and your committee for the great work you did on the Community Pride in Motion. And you individuals and your committee is part of what makes Halton City great, and we just want to thank you. And I'd like to ask other members of the council, any of you want to add anything I've said?
Thanks a lot.
We do thank you.
I would like to thank the, what I did fail to say was there were 12, let's see, 12,000 water bills, and we got 500 surveys back. And out of those, 96 people bothered to sign them. And I want to thank those people for taking the interest to let us know and let you know what they felt was really important in our city. And thanks again for letting us serve.
We do appreciate it, and thank you again. The third and final presentation tonight is to recognize the Halton High School Quarterback Club and the new campaign they've initiated, It Takes a City. And Charles, if you will, and if the other gentleman with you would like to join me at
I have a proclamation I want to make tonight. And Charles, then, I'd like for you to address the group and introduce these fine young men you have with you, and tell us a little bit about this Texas City. Whereas it is in the best interest of all that each of us support education and the efforts of the Burbank Independent School District and the volunteers involved. And whereas the Halton High School Quarterback Club has undertaken a campaign entitled It Takes a City to support student athletic activities. And whereas this campaign is intended to involve the entire community for the purpose of supporting and celebrating currently active students and those who have gone before. And whereas the Halton High School Football Game of the evening of September 28th, 2001 is intended as a celebration of community and school spirit of our Halton High School Buffaloes. Now therefore, I Calvin White, Mayor of Halton City, do hereby proclaim our city and its support of It Takes a City and pledge that the City of Halton City will do what is required to assist in these efforts. And Charles, it's my pleasure to present this proclamation to you.
Thank you, sir.
And if you would, tell us about It Takes a City, introduce these young men and the gentleman with you.
Thank you. If you guys want to go back to your seats, then we'll have you stand up. Mayor, we thank you for that very muchly, and city council persons. We have 10 of our 51 varsity players here tonight. All of these guys are seniors. Introducing, and they'll stand up as we do this, Justin Waddell, wide receiver, Bobby Quintanilla, wide receiver, Jason, who is known as JR Molinar, wide receiver, Efren Baruman, wide receiver, Cody Justice, wide receiver and quarterback. Juan Zuniga is a guard. Brian Bozeman, linebacker. John Swakowski, wide receiver and free safety. Brandon Booth, the tight end, defensive tackle, and Jerome Brooks, running back. These guys are here tonight to be a part of the city council meeting, to learn a little bit about city council, how it works, and things like that. And I would like to ask right now if our coach, who is our new coach this year, will come and say a couple of words for you. Coach Shoemaker.
Mayor White, council, I thank you for the opportunity. I'm excited about being in Halton City. I spent the last three years down outside of Austin, Texas, at Lake Travis. Before that, I was at Mansfield. Before that, I spent 14 years in Arlington. In those 14 years, one thing we always knew, every time we came over to Halton City and played the Halton Buffaloes, these guys in the black helmets were going to give us fits. And they did. And that's why it's exciting for me to be here in a place that still has that hometown atmosphere. It's the Halton Buffaloes, and it's Halton City. And this great place and the things that you do and the proclamation we have that we do for these kids, it's a pleasure for me to be here. My wife and I are glad to be back in the Metroplex. We're glad to be in this community. I just want to thank you for everything. I invite you to come out and support these youngsters, because I guarantee you, they will make Halton City proud. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
With the permission of the mayor, a couple of our players had something they wanted to say. And to just a couple of minutes, first is JR Molinar.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers and the city administration, I want to thank you for allowing us to come before you this evening. You may not know that football has been a big part of the city since the first Burbank game that was played in 1935. A Friday night tradition has been established over the years, and Halton Buffalo football has reached the playoff four times in the last five years. In 2001, we plan to take our team, that includes 16 returning starters from our playoff team of 2000, further than any Halton team has ever gone. We are hoping to be playing the state finals in December. In keeping with our 2001 theme of It Takes a City, we'd like to ask the council to approve of us making the water tower turn orange on football game nights. To do this, the Quarterback Clubs Committee, named Buffalo Image, will place colored gels on the 10 lights that are around the Halton Row Tower. When the team returns from the game, the tower will glow orange color. If we have won the game, or maybe should I say after we've won the game, the tower will glow orange throughout the night, making everyone aware that the Halton Buffaloes have been victorious. Should we lose, the gels will be removed while we're in the locker room, and a new week will start. I understand that Mr. Booth has met with your mayor and some of your officials, and an agreement has been made to how this is to be handled. This motion is on your consent agenda for this evening, and we, the representatives of the 2001 Halton Buffaloes, do appreciate your approval of the request. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And you have another speaker.
We'd like for Brandon Booth at this time.
Mayor White, councilmembers and administrators, my name is Brandon Booth. I'm a three-year letterman who is now a senior playing for your Halton Buffaloes. Since my freshman year, I had the desire to see Halton City become a force that gives a football team the extra power, like is found in Lewisville, Stephenville, Weatherford, and other cities throughout the state. For too long, my hometown of Halton City has been meshed in the Metroplex when it comes to our football team. It is time for our Halton City people, who have current students, past students, or citizens who have just want to raise the bar to a new level, to catch the new plan that we have designed for this year and many years to come. This plan is called It Takes a City. We, the football players, speaking also for the cheerleaders, the band, the band members, and the hurters, and every other team and organization, including the whole student body of Halton High School, are requesting that the City of Halton City rally around our activities and efforts at the Halton High School. As a member of the football team, I am personally asking you, Mr. Mayor, and the city council and the city administrators, to be the leaders in bringing our city to the highest level of awareness and support that is possible beginning of this season. In appreciation of your anticipation, support that we have set for this year, September 28th, 2001, which is our game against Pasco at the old Burbank Stadium, we are going to call that Night It Takes a City. We hope you and the council members will attend the pregame ceremonies, and we continue your support the whole season, throughout the 2001 season. Your support is paramount to our success this year and into the future. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you. Mr. Booth, anything further you'd like to say to the council?
Thank you very much for allowing us to take the time tonight to do this. And the guys would like to do one thing on their way out, because they have to go and study, because that's part of staying in football. They'd like to come through and shake your hands, and you guys wish them a good year. Is that okay?
That's fine.
Guys, just come out right here. And we appreciate it.
Yes.
Thank you.
Can't wait to see that thing orange all the time.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, I'd like to have the floor a moment.
Yes.
I would like to tell the gentlemen out there how proud we are to have them. Quite a few of us councilmembers come out last year and watched you. And just through the spirits y'all have and the gentlemen that y'all are, when we went down and worked with you on some projects and stuff, you really made a change in our lives. And we got, I think it was Kip Waters here a few weeks ago and said he had Buffalo blood flowing in his veins. I challenge all the cities and businesses, citizens and businesses in Halton City, to go out and do what they can to support this team. I'm going to try to urge the citizens to dress up their billboards, to dress up their businesses, and let people know in Tarrant County that we do have a Buffalo team. And Brandon, if you'll step forward about two foot, show these people you're on. That gentleman right there can bench press 385 pounds. So, come on, Richland.
Councilmember Williams, I know you've worked a great deal with the Quarterback Club. Mention was made a moment ago about the water tower. Would you be sure everybody here understands what's going to be happening to the water tower, and let's be watching for that?
One of the ideals that came up, and I don't know where they got their idea, they've got a lot of energy. And we noticed over there on the water tower on 820 and Hawthorne Road, if you go by, it has some lights that shine up on the tower. And these things that they're going to put over the lights on the night that they win will turn that tower orange. And so when you come in on Friday night and that tower's orange, you know that Buffalo's won that night. And so I guess the only thing I can say, just make you orange, you're glad you're a Buffalo.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. You're certainly welcome to stay. We're going to be here for another two or three hours, and if you want to stand and wait, you're welcome to. Otherwise, feel free to go at this time. Ladies and gentlemen, as you look at your agenda tonight, we have items number four through 19 that are on the consent agenda. These are very routine matters, and we will take action on those as a group rather than individually. In addition to items number four through 19, we're adding item number 26, 29, 30, and 32 to the consent agenda. Gentlemen, I will entertain a motion at this time. Councilmember Avery.
Mayor, I make a motion we approve the consent agenda with the addition of items number 26, 29, 30, and 32.
Councilmember Hurley.
Second.
If you will, gentlemen, cast your vote. And the vote to accept the consent agenda with those additions has passed by unanimous vote. We come now to the visitors and citizens forum, and this is a time set aside for any person having business before the council that is not scheduled on the agenda to speak to the council. A speaker's request card must be completed and submitted prior to the start of the meeting. All of the comments made during this portion of our meeting are to be directed to the presiding officer rather than to an individual council member or staff member. Each speaker must limit their comments to the subject listed on their speaker's request card, and a five-minute time limit will be granted. So, our first speaker tonight is Mr. Bill Jurney. Mr. Jurney, if you will come forward at this time and identify yourself and give us your name for the record, please.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and council. My name is Bill Jurney, and I live at 2710 Moneta Avenue here in Halton City. Okay, what I have to talk about has something to do with our justice, in a way, and a '74 model pickup of mine. In the beginning, now I've written this down so I won't have to chase my memory, you know, over the five-minute limit. Okay? In the beginning, Thomas Jefferson introduced us to a system of democracy that ensured us equal rights for all, special privileges for none. Most of us are aware of the new democracy that smells a lot like American dictatorship. So often, our lawmakers and politicians will speak of so many things we need, or they might use their favorite byline, "We're going to do it for the children." You know, extra patrol officers, government-controlled environments like senior centers, rec centers, et cetera. And we wonder whatever happened to free enterprise? With dangerous streets due to lack of patrols, we need them. As a matter of fact, for a few dollars more taxes, we are introduced to what I call GIP, GIPS, as in after-school programs, minority diversity training, English school language, second language, et cetera. All the while, automobile accidents are still the number-one killer of our children. You knew this. But I thought, oh, yes, and the dope problem, we won't even go there. But I thought stopping at red lights and stop signs, like so many other traffic laws, were the law and not an option. Even code enforcement has become more of a sort of communist snitch rap. If your neighbor or the citizen doesn't call in on you, then there is no code violation. I would suppose under our new democracy, if a pedestrian is hit and killed and no one sees it, then there's really no violation. Right? Same principle. And now my code in violation. There are many illegal parked cars all over this town that apparently are not in violation because no one calls in. What kind of justice is this? And now I fear parking my car in the backyard. Under the new democracy and American dictatorship, Barbara's house could very well burn, plum down. What's worse, I'll bet every one of you on this council will have the audacity to ask us for a vote in our next election. Honestly, if this is the best you can do with eight cents on our dollar, shame on you. Or must this money now go for health care, insurance, and anything except our freedom, our safety, and equal rights? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jurney. One thing I failed to mention a moment ago, item number 31, the issue regarding the first reading on an ordinance for Daisy Lane, will have to be tabled until our next meeting to allow Texas Utilities to do some research. If you signed a speaker's card regarding the issue on Daisy Lane, we will ask you to come forward when I call your name during this visitors and citizens forum. We do want to give you an opportunity to speak, but we do want you to understand that we will not take action on these items, on this item tonight, to allow Texas Utilities time to do more research. Our next speaker to appear before the council is Carolyn Smith. Carolyn, will you come forward and give us your name and address for the record and make your comments, please?
My name is Carolyn Smith. I live at 4721 Modella, Halton City. I've lived here for over 35 years. The only thing I have to say tonight is about the eight-liner machines, about the eight-liners that y'all are trying to get rid of, and the state's trying to get rid of. You're getting rid of jobs, you're getting rid of revenue for the city, and our streets aren't worth nothing up there by us. Gene Lane is like a hill country there. You just want to raise our taxes, and we voted in the eight-cent tax, but that didn't seem to help. And now you want a bond election, and you expect us to vote for it, but then you're taking jobs away from all these people. There's no harm in these things. You have, these grocery stores have them, which is fine. You have bingo, you have liquor, but we don't even, we can't sell beer, can't buy beer here. Everybody goes out of town to buy it. I don't get it. You know, it's just, it doesn't make any sense, because you're taking the revenue away from Halton City. And I know the streets need it bad. So find a way to find out how you're going to replace all this money. That's the only thing I have to say about it. I mean, it doesn't harm anybody. If it was like big gambling, I could understand it, but they don't pay money. I don't go, you know, to them, but I know a lot of people that do. And I know a lot of older people, they don't have anything else to do. And if they want to spend their money like that, that's a privilege. This is the United States. It's not a communist country. Thank you.
Another thing I had failed to mention a moment ago is because any of the items that are listed on the visitors and citizens forum are not posted, the council cannot comment or take any action regarding them. We are here to listen, we're interested in what you have to say, and we want you to use your five minutes with the understanding that our ears are open and we're listening to what you have to say. Our next speaker, Mr. David Bugay.
Good evening, councilmembers. Mr. Mayor, my name is David Bugay. I live at 922 Thistle Ridge in Arlington, Texas. I've had a business here in Halton City for the last three years. Eight-liner business, also slash Conoco Station down at 121. We have one on Beach Street. All I can say is, you know, I'm in other cities also, and we get along. We donate to all their functions that they ask us to donate to, their city summer functions, the policeman softball team. You know, we're here to get along. Now, if we use their police officers as our security, give them jobs, be more than happy to do that here. We donate to charitable organizations, be glad to do that here. When I first moved in here, I donated to one of your city functions, got a little plaque and a t-shirt. You know, we can get along. We don't have to go to court, we don't have to do all the craziness. You know, we don't need to keep coming to council meetings time and time again when you've got more important things to worry about. And there's more important things to worry about out there. The drug issues here, you've got a lot of things to worry about. This is not an issue. Let the state worry about it. Let the state worry about it. I can, you know, I can get along, and I can do things to help the city, and so can everybody here. We don't need to go down this road. And I'd appreciate it if everybody just sat down and talked about it. You've got a lot of police officers here that are not allowed to go outside the city to look for work. They need jobs, they need extra income, be more than happy to put them to work. You know, give us a chance, we'll get along. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Bugay. Our next speaker, Linda McCollum. If you would, come forward at this time and state your name for the record as well as your address.
My name is Linda McCollum. I live at 3325 Willercrest. I participate in eight-liner machines, and I resent it if you think Christians can't go to these places, because I am a Christian, and my husband, my husband is disabled with back injury. He goes and plays, not so much play as communicate with the people. Before this started, depression, he slept all the time, because he had nothing to do. And now that these are enforced, he goes, he's made new friends, and it's really entertainment. We're not broke from it, I mean, a penny here, a penny there. We don't drink, we don't do any other things, so, it's entertainment. You pay to go to the movies, so this is entertaining to him. I mean, I work, but I go down there afterwards, and I might hang around two or three hours just to visit. It's more of a socialite club, gambling place. If you want to gamble, you can always go to Louisiana, but I don't see any harm in eight-liners being here, and like I say, it's your money, do what we want to do with it. I mean, we live in a free country, I thought. You know, I'm up in senior years, and I thought I could pretty well do with my money what I wanted to do with it. When I was a kid, I couldn't, but I think I can now, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker for the Citizens and Visitors Forum is Joy Berry. If you would, Ms. Berry, come forward and state your name for the record and give us your address, please.
Your Honor, City Council, my name is Joy Berry. I'm from 4204 Field Street. First off, I'd like to applaud Phil Jennings. He's the only City Council member that has shown any interest in calling any of the citizens that I know of, and he asked my opinion on it. Talking about the game rooms, I have one that I have gone to that I do participate. I do not see anything wrong with it. I don't own one, I don't own any partnership in any, but I do agree with Linda. There's no drinking that goes on, you don't find any drugs going on, there's no prostitution going on, there's no fights going on. It's good, clean, socializing, they have meals, they do benefits and raise money for charitable organizations. When, when we leave there, or whoever leaves there, when they hit the streets to go home, they're not drunk and they're not putting your life and your life and all of our lives in danger when they go. They're sober when they leave the place. We've had fun, that's all there is to it. There's nothing wrong with it. It beats, I mean, you know, Oscars is a wonderful restaurant. They serve alcohol, you know, and the City Council has presented them with, the city has presented them with awards. Doesn't make any sense to me, none at all. There's nothing going on that shouldn't be going on. Permits were given for these people to, to get these machines and to run these machines and to have a business. Now they're being told they can't, after all the investments they've made. That's wrong, that is totally wrong. If y'all invested something, you would be fighting to keep it, and that's all that we, that, we have the right to do that. We have the right to speak up for what we got. We've had too many things taken away from us in this world that we shouldn't have taken away from us. We're told how we can drive our cars. That's wrong. If the government wants to, to pay for them, then they can tell us how we can drive them, strapped in or not. But there, you know, you've got to draw a line somewhere. Now you're telling us we can't have any kind of entertainment. That's all I have to say on it, there's nothing wrong with them. They're good, it's good, clean fun, and it's like Linda said, there's a lot, the majority of it is senior citizens, and that sometimes is the only socialization that they have, and there's not a thing wrong with it. And y'all need to consider that before you shut all this down. And Mayor, I myself, I would like to ask for your resignation.
Our next speaker tonight is Leah Luce Holt. Ms. Holt, if you'll come forward and give us your name for the record as well as your address.
Well, my name's Leah Luce Holt, and I live at 2117 Dayton Street.
Will you pull the microphone down a little bit closer?
Because I'm short.
Thank you.
And I'm for the eight-liners myself. That's my recreation whenever I'm not at work, or when I'm not tending to my grandkids, just like the rest of them, you know? That is my enjoyment, you know, whenever I'm not home cleaning. I just want to say, I'm for the eight-liners.
BJ Smith, our next speaker tonight. If you would, come forward. And Ms. Smith, if you'll give us your name and address for the record, we would appreciate it.
My name is BJ Smith. I live at 7216 Northeast Loop 820. I was an employer for the eight-liners. I'm losing my job. I'm self, I'm selfish, take care of myself. There's nothing wrong with the game rooms. People come in, they have fun, something to do, we meet a lot of people, we do everything that you all require for them to do. And it's, Holton City, you know, they, they do a lot of things, the charities, they contribute, they do the merchandise there. You know, what's, what's the deal? I don't understand. You know, you've got bingo halls, you've got eight-liners everywhere, but why not here? Why not help? Like they said, you know, your police force, all your charities, your businesses. You're losing money, and we're losing our job, and it's good, it's fun, it's clean. And I, for one, would like for the mayor to step down, if they can, do something with this.
Our next speaker tonight, on the, to appear before the City Council and the Visitors and Citizens Forum, is Stephanie Hopkins. Ms. Hopkins, if you would, come forward and give us your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, my name is Stephanie Hopkins. My address is 6620 McCoy Court, Watauga. I am also an employee of one of the local game rooms, and because of this, I will also be losing my job. Unlike, just like the others, we have vehicles, we have homes, things that we have to make monthly payments on. Without these jobs, we won't be able to do this. We give money to the local stores to the area, as far as your local grocery stores, your local movie places, things of this nature, so the revenue goes back into the community. Now, you were asked, given up the money, would you be willing to give up the money? Your answer was yes, if it meant closing the game rooms. And then your turnabout was, to replace the money, let's raise taxes. Makes no sense. There's no harm, there's no alcohol. The elderly can come in and have a place to play, guaranteed food, guaranteed drinks, and you're willing to take this away and in return raise taxes to replace the money? I don't think so. I also ask for your resignation.
Next to speak before the council tonight is Tamara Shelton Haynes. If you would, come forward at this time and give us your name and address for the record, please.
Tamara Shelton Haynes, I reside at 3905 Januar Court here in Holton City. I've been a taxpayer in Holton City for 22 years, and I also am an employee, or have been an employee of an eight-liner business. And, again, because of some of the decisions that have been made, we'll be losing my job. It, I can't repeat, I mean, I can't say anything that wouldn't be repetitive to what has already been said, except for the fact that if we are willing, as a community, to give up over $3 million in revenue to come into this city, that could help the elderly, that could help gang prevention, that could help drugs and, and different things that, that are going on, we could have, we could have some things that kids could do, so they wouldn't be involved in gangs. We could have some things that the elderly could do if this is not an issue, but giving up that three-plus million dollars is not going to give back anything to Holton City, let alone, like was mentioned before, the roads. I mean, the, the Holton City roads are horrible. So I think that, you know, it just, it just needs to really be considered that, that this is a social activity for, for a lot of our elderly people, a lot of people in general, and again, there's no alcohol served, there's no, when people come into the, to play the games, and if they have been drinking, they're asked to leave, because they don't need to be there. That's not an environment that we wish to have people play in. So I think that it just really needs to be considered that the, the game rooms and the eight-liners are allowed in Holton City. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Janice Austin, I believe you're our next speaker tonight. If you would, come forward and state your name for the record and your address, please.
My name is Janice Austin. I live at 51 Hurrican Road, Holton City. I'm a little upset today. I just got put on permanent vacation, till y'all decide what's going to happen in my life. People have asked for your resignation. Whether you give it or not, it doesn't matter. We, as a community, think that we have the right to decide what we want to do with our life. That is not your choice, that is ours. Please, use your brain. This is a city, it's a community. You're tearing us down. I have been here for a year, and if it continues like this, I will be the first to leave your city, because this is not mine, it's yours.
Rhonda Curtis is our next speaker tonight. Rhonda, if you would, come forward and give us your name and your address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Rhonda Curtis, 7608 Maple Leaf. I'm also an employee of an eight-liner game room, or may not be for, for long. I agree with everyone else, majority of our customers are the elderly, they come in, it's more of a socializing. Once again, we don't serve alcohol, there are no drugs, no prostitutes, nothing like that. I also read in the paper how you're willing to turn down the revenue that we put back into your community, but yet, you want to ask for a tax increase. It could be our money that buys your lights for your football team, to shine on the, on the water tower. We could, we could help this community, and y'all just want to run us out of town when we've done nothing but put money back into this community, money that is sorely needed. Thank you.
Our next speaker tonight in the Citizens and Visitors Forum is Barbara, is it Palmer?
Palmer.
Palmer. If you would, come forward at this time and state your name, and I apologize for not pronouncing it correctly, give us your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Barbara Palmer, and good old Indian-Durman name, right? And I reside at 120 Riverside, even though that's my place of work, I've been there 30 years, so I feel like I live there. Okay. As everyone else, I'm speaking for the people with the eight-liners. I have no connection with them, no business whatsoever. Many years ago, I spoke in council in the state capital of Tennessee for the rights of my people to have a voice in government. With Governor Lamar Alexander and Representative Al Gore behind me, my goal was achieved and legislation was passed. We won representation per capita people, people for us. I thought I finally knew what democracy was till I came to Texas. You see, I was raised as white. I'm from Alabama. In Alabama, Indian children, nor blacks could go to school with whites. Had it been known that my father was Indian, he could not have been a Baptist preacher, nor could he have been chairman of the Selective Service Board, nor lieutenant colonel on Governor Wallace's staff, who was also Cherokee Indian. Well, my father passed away in 1975, left enigmatic clue. Find your heritage, find out who you are, stand up and be proud, and fight for America and the rights of all the people. And that's what I'm here tonight, for you see, I am a Cherokee, and I'm proud of it. For over 300 years, my people have fought for America, without being citizens, without even having a flag. Even Ira Hayes, the Pima Indian, who raised the flag at Iwo Jima was not a citizen. The last state to allow voting of the American Indian was in 1947, so I'm here once again with a plea for democracy, freedom of speech, and all rights entitled to these people by the Constitution. Chapter 47 of the Penal Code of Texas says eight-liners are defatized, bona fide amusement machines, there is no cash swapping. Once again, we have a divided government to see who holds the most power. Here we have the city trying to make their own laws and override the state. If we can all read, why do we all see it so differently? It just doesn't make sense. Is this politics, or is it religion? It can't be religion, because we have bingo parlors, we have moose lodges, we have everything. A good Christian would call this gambling. By closing the game rooms, you will be depriving many people of the right to congregate and meet with their friends after work. Most of us still work and have raised our own families. We don't go to bars, nor senior citizen clubs, and we're surely not ready for someone to read us or sing us "Happy Birthday" on a rinky-dink piano, or at least I'm not. We could go places that a three-year-old could play machines and win big prizes, or go to Harrah's on the Playstation. Or we could chat online, but I like to see real people. As the people said, it's $3 million. My boys told me last night, I have seven foster boys that I've raised, they said the same thing, "What about the children?" Says, "Mom, check it out, see what the dropout rate at Holton High is. You need to take some of that money and go do some volunteer work up there, get those kids back in school, see what the problem is." Says, "Why worry about you, when I know where I can go pick you up, when I want to pick you up?" I says, "That's..." Then they do. It'll be at one of the eight-liners. You know, the Creator made the sun and the moon and the stars. He gave each one of them a responsibility. The sun lights our day, the sun is great, we need the power. We've got the power. The moon, the stars, they light the night and they give us navigation. They have a responsibility to the earth. The people of Holton City voted you guys in as a voice in the government. You are supposed to be the voice. These people tonight are saying you're not their voice, so something needs to be done, something needs to be changed. The people here are challenging you to surveys and petitions to see what is right and what is wrong. They want back free enterprise. I believe that 100% of the people that are standing behind me tonight have asked me to ask for the resignation of the City Council.
Our next speaker, Ruth Ann Sparland. Ms. Sparland, if you would, come forward at this time and state your name and address for the record, if you would, please.
My name is Ruth Ann Sparland. I live at 3428 Meadow Oaks Drive, and my issue tonight was Daisy Lane, and I was going to just pass, but I found this very interesting, because the mayor wants a street built that we, that we have already established is not needed, to, you know, just because people want to drive through there, it's not needed. Well, why don't we just let the eight-liner stay here and use their tax dollars, and you can build your street, Calvin?
Ms. Burkhart, if you would, come forward, state your name and address for the record, and you have five minutes.
I'll pass tonight. I'll pass.
Okay, Ms. Burkhart wishes to, to pass. Shirley Smith. And Ms. Smith passes. Councilmember John Williams, I think you want to shed your mayor pro temp position for about five minutes and address the council at this time as, not councilmember John Williams, but private citizen John Williams.
Yes, I'm private citizen. I didn't resign, I'm just up here as private citizen John Williams.
Williams. First of all, what I want to speak about is letters to the editor of the Star Telegram. I've been on the city council for three years, and no offense to our reporter here, but through the tool of the letter to the editor, we have been hammered many times about what we've done, about how we conduct business here. When I was a child, my mother never told me how I'd grow up to be a used car dealer. Never once mentioned that automobile sales would be my profession, and never told me that car lots were the milk and honey, and that our used car dealer financial security would be mine for the taking. She never did that because she didn't want to fill my head with hogwash. We have citizens here that like to wash the paper and fill your head with hogwash. I make no excuse about how I earn my living. I give a good eight hours' work plus every day for a good eight hours' wages. My profession is honorable one, and I'm very proud of my accomplishments. Certain gentleman in the town who holds the position of silver-haired legislator, it troubles me a great deal the way of his thinking. The last national election, he brought shame on our city just by the way someone thought or their political views. Someone put up Democratic signs, and that was the ultimate sin. This gentleman called me in, another city councilman, and had us direct our staff to have those signs taken down. To our ignorance, we didn't know the state law wouldn't allow us to do that. He had his right to put the sign up, or she had her right to put her sign up. You can't judge a group of people just by a group that they belong to, no more than you judge an occupation just by the work you do. In this silver-haired legislator's line of work, I understand it takes 35 votes on a petition and a $5 bill to get you on the ballot. I've never voted for one, I've never seen one on the ballot. But yet, you can wear a little sign around it, it looks like a license plate that says, "I'm the silver-haired legislator," and, you know, write the Star Telegram with your name and your background and hammer us. Elected officials should be held to a higher standard of conduct. They should inform the public. I watched the silver-haired legislator tape the other night on TV, 48 minutes long. It's some very nice people and are working very hard to do stuff in Austin for the senior people. That's what their job is. They're supposed to take items to Austin that are of interest to the senior people and take them to the legislature and try to get those things passed. One of my friends that's here tonight is a senior citizen, and he was told by this gentleman, the only way to be a good politician is be able to lie and lie convincingly. And I don't believe that's a good way to be a politician. If it is, I will do, as the lady said a while ago, I will resign because I will not do that to be a politician. But some people feel that that's what you got to do. I had spoke today. One of the things that was in the article of the paper, and I don't know how I'm doing on time, Mr. Mayor, I've got two minutes, thank you. In this article two weeks ago, it said there are 75 car lots in Halton City. That was quoted from the Star Telegram, which doesn't always get their facts right, but they try. There's actually 66, but we lost one more this week, bringing it down to 65. And a lot of these doesn't mean there are 65 buildings that are car lots. Some of them share buildings together, so there's even less buildings than that. These car lots, for years, have donated money to children's organizations, to all the sports and stuff, and worked hard, and they're proud of what they do. Last year, in the Tarrant County, there was $220 million collected in automobile sales tax, of which the county kept 11 million, and that goes back in the road and bridge fee, which does come back indirectly to Halton City. A fourth of the remaining went to the schools. The other $209 million went to the general fund. I feel like if you have a problem with a city, I don't know how many people spoke here, Mr. Mayor tonight, but these people have exercised their right. I had no idea they were coming. But if you've got a problem with the city or the city council, coming straight to us and going to the newspapers is not the way to air out your laundry. And therefore, in my opinion, I would request that Mr. Jack Lewis do one of two things, either get behind us and work with us, or resign from silver-haired legislator.
There being no further people who had requested to address the council and the Visitors' and Citizens' Forum, we will take a five-minute recess. The Halton City Council meeting is called back to order, if we could have order, in the council chamber, please. Thank you very much. We overlooked five individuals who wanted to speak during the Visitors' and Citizens' Forum a moment ago. At this time, the first one to speak is Cindy Lawyer. Cindy, if you will come forward at this time, and I want to restate the rules, we have five minutes. If you would state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, my name is Cindy Lawyer. I live at 3908 Kimbo Road, Halton City. And I'm speaking for the game room, the game rooms, plural. I do not work at any of them, have no affiliation with them, but I do play at them. What I'd like to say, most of everything has already been said that needs to be said. There is a couple of things I'd like to bring up. People have told you how the elderly have a place to go, but they didn't bother to tell you about the young people that go there. That they're not in gangs, they're not out selling dope, they're not out buying dope, they're not out doing anything. Then they're playing those machines. There's no arguing going on, there's no disputes of any kind. There's nobody there to dispute with. If you're mad at anybody, you're mad at the machine that's not paying off, and that machine is not going to argue with you. So there's nothing, there's nothing, there's nothing wrong with those game rooms. So the whole thing about you wanting to shut them down is political. We know this, just like y'all know we know this, because there's nothing wrong with something good happening. And this is a very good thing, a very exceptionally good thing. One of the best things has come along in quite a while. And so when you look at it and you try to figure out, why would people want to stop something this good? There's not but one reason, it's political. And so I believe that this city council and this mayor, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe you're supposed to be for us, working for us, with us. Well, I think maybe you lost sight of your goal, because if you can let three-plus million dollars just be disregarded as the revenue that is going back into the city on a regular basis, on a regular basis, and just not, it's not, it's not even important to you. And if it gets to the point that you need it, you can just raise taxes. That's not for us. You're not working for us, you're working against us. And I have to say, Mayor, you're giving this whole council a bad name. So like has, like so many have said before me, I would like to ask for your resignation. And I'd like to do so to save this council and us.
Our next speaker tonight, Paty Sullivan. Ms. Sullivan, will you come forward and state your name and address for the record, please?
My name is Paty Sullivan. I live on Starlight Drive. I'm a member of the Halton City Library. And I'm really here tonight because of the article that appeared in the paper this morning. It made me fighting mad. If you haven't read it, it's on the first page of the northeast section of the Star Telegram. I have visited with the young lady who wrote the article, and I think she's been here tonight, may still be here. We did not reach any satisfaction. But I'm here to say to the council that I'm here to show my support for this bond election. I will talk to all of my neighbors about it. I plan to get a telephone campaign going. And this bond election does include the library. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. Bonnie Richards is our next speaker. Ms. Richards, if you will come forward at this time and state your name and address for the record, please.
I'm Bonnie Richards. I'm a 1952 resident of Halton City on Sabel Lane. And I have seen this city grow over the years, and I too am here in response to the article in the Star Telegram this morning. I think that our current city officials have done a great job, and are doing in future, will do a great job in trying to bring Halton City into the modern age. And I'm a supporter of this bond election. I'm especially a supporter of the library and for a new library, because I do not believe most of the residents of this city know how many people come through our library during a month's time. I don't believe they realize what an integral part the library is to our city for residents and non-residents. I hope in the coming months, when we see things published in our paper, or published on our water bills, or published in our newsletters, that our city officials will make available to the residents the positive facts and the positive things of Halton City, so that the residents themselves can decide on the merits of this bond election on their own, and not take the opinions and the views of just a few and let that determine their vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Richards. Our next speaker, Joyce Moody. Ms. Moody, if you would come forward, give us your name and state your address for our record, please.
My name is Joyce Moody. I live at 5816 Webster. I'm a member of the library board, and I am here to give my full support to the bond issue. My husband and I have raised a family here in Halton City. We're now in the progress, process of raising a grandson that lives with us. And we would like the city to keep on making progress, and we can do that if we pass the bond issue. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And our final speaker tonight to appear before the council and the Visitors' Citizens' Forum is Rexanne Grove. Ms. Grove?
Good evening. My name is Rexanne Grove. I live at 3929 Emerald Oaks, and I am on the library board, and I am here to show my support for the bond election, for everything, not just the library. But I'm very fond of the library, obviously. And I hope you will consider this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And we are now complete with the Visitors' Citizens' Forum. We move on to our public hearings, item number 20. Mr. Elfric, would you like to tell us what we're about to do, please?
Mr. Mayor and council, public, item number 20 is to conduct a public hearing and consider the application of Colin W. Turner on behalf of Jones-Cummings-Turner Partnership for a zoning change from the C3 commercial district to the C5 commercial district on lots 8, 9, and 13. Block 2, Shady Dell Edition, and from the C1 commercial district to the C5 commercial district on Lot 7, Block 2, Shady Dell Edition, located on the east side of East Belknap Street, containing approximately a half an acre of land, locally known as 4808 East Belknap Street. This item has been reviewed by the Planning and Zoning Commission. Our planning director, and is recommended for approval.
Okay, the public hearing is now open on Z.1024-01. Is the owner of this property present, and do they wish to speak to the council at this time? Would you wish to speak to the council, or just be available to answer questions?
Available to answer questions, Director.
Okay. Do we have anyone in the audience who would like to speak in favor of this change of zoning from C3 to C5? Anyone who would like to speak against? There being none, I declare the public hearing closed, and we're ready now to move forward to the corresponding ordinance. Councilmember Jennings?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Move to approve 02001-05515.
Councilmember Avery?
Mayor, I have a question for legal counsel.
May we get a second, and then we'll do that. Councilmember Markham?
Second.
Okay, councilmember.
Mayor, because I do own property within 200 feet of this particular piece of property, should I abstain from voting on this issue?
Councilmember Avery, I would recommend that you abstain from voting on it and fill out, update with the city secretary. If you live within 200 feet, you should have gotten a notice of the zoning change. And because the law presumes that you're an effective property owner by sending you notice, I think it would be a good recommendation that you abstain.
Mayor, based on council's advice, I will abstain from voting on this issue.
Okay, so recognized. Any further discussion on the motion? Gentlemen, if you will, register your votes. And this passes with six votes, with councilmember Avery abstaining. We move now to item number 21.
Mr. Mayor and council, item number 21 is to conduct a public hearing and consider the application of Hank Biggers on behalf of Charles W. Collins Jr. for a conditional use permit and zoning change request from C3 commercial district to the C4 commercial district to operate an auto paint and body shop on Lot 1, Block 1, Ray Austin Edition, containing approximately .2791 acres of land located on the east side of North Beach Street, locally known as 2226 North Beach Street. As in the past, this item has been reviewed by our P&amp;Z Commission and our Planning and Zoning Director, and is recommended for approval.
Is the owner of this property present? Okay, we will open the public hearing at this time. Anyone in the audience wishing to speak in favor of this request? Anyone against? There being none, gentlemen, if you will, let's move to the corresponding ordinance. Councilmember Hurley?
Mayor, I move, we approve number 02001-056-15.
Okay, we have a motion. Councilmember Markham?
Second.
Have a motion and a second, if you will, gentlemen. Register your vote. Motion passes. Item number 22.
Mayor and council, item number 22 is to conduct a public hearing and consider the application of F.W. Havens on behalf of the Havens Family Partnership for a conditional use permit to operate an auto paint and body shop containing approximately 6,400 square feet of floor space and a portion of building number 6360 located on this site. Property is owned M1 Industrial District on Lot 1, Block 1, Havens Subdivision, containing approximately 2.86 acres of land located on the south side of Airport Freeway, locally known as 6360 Airport Freeway Suite 200. This one has been reviewed by staff, the Planning Commission, and is recommended for approval.
I'll open the public hearing at this time. Anyone in the audience wishing to speak in favor of this request? Anyone wishing to speak against? There being none, I'll close the public hearing, and we'll move to the corresponding ordinance. Gentlemen, councilmember Jennings?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Move to approve 02001-05715.
Councilmember Markham?
Second.
Any discussion? There being none, gentlemen, if you will, register your vote. Motion carries. Item number 23.
Item number 23 is to conduct a public hearing and consider the application of John Andrews on behalf of G.C. Partnership for a zoning change request from the C3 commercial district to the C5 commercial district on tracks 2E2 and 2F1A West North, Norse Survey, A-1165, containing approximately .59 acres of land located in the triangle where East Belknap splits into East Belknap and Beulah Streets, locally known as 5801 East Belknap Street. This item has also been reviewed by the P&amp;Z Commission, our Planning Director, and is recommended for approval. recommended for approval.
I'll open the public hearing at this time on item number 23, that being Z-028-01. Anyone in the audience wishing to speak in favor of this zoning request? Anyone wishing to speak against? There being none, the public hearing is closed, and we move to the corresponding motion. Councilmember Markham?
Thank you, Mayor. Move that we pass ordinance number 0-2001-58-15.
Councilmember Henderson?
That's for a second.
Councilmember Hurley?
That was for a second.
Okay. Any discussion on the motion?
Go ahead.
There being none, gentlemen, register your vote, and it passes by unanimous vote. Item number 24.
Item number 24 is to conduct a public hearing and consider the application of Walter Leighton for a zoning change request from the C3 Commercial District to the C5 Commercial District on lots 1A and 2A, Block 1 Oak Knoll Edition, containing approximately .241 acres of land, located on the southwest corner of East Belknap Street and Oak Knoll Drive, locally known as 4416 and 4418 East Belknap Street. This item has been reviewed by our Planning and Zoning Commission, our Planning Director, and is recommended for approval.
Public hearing is now open on this request. Anyone in the audience wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak against? If you would, gentlemen, we'll move now, having closed the public hearing, to the corresponding motion. Councilmember Markham?
Thank you, Mayor. Move that we pass ordinance number 0-2001-059-15.
Councilmember Henderson?
That's for a second.
If you will, register your vote. Motion passes. Item number 25. Before we do that, councilmember Jennings?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Due to a longstanding family friendship of approximately 30 years, I will be recusing myself on agenda, item number 25.
Item number 25 is the last public hearing tonight of this sort. It is to consider the application of Jerry Enos for a zoning change request from the C3 Commercial District to the C5 Commercial District on Lot 2, Block 1, Enos Edition, and track 14A J. Walker Survey, containing approximately .2009 acres of land, located on the northeast corner of East Belknap Street and Leighton Avenue, locally known as 4401 and 4415 East Belknap Street. This item has been reviewed by the P&amp;Z Commission, our Planning Director, and is recommended for approval.
Okay, you've heard the explanation. We will open the public hearing at this time. Anyone in the audience wishing to speak in favor of this request? Anyone wishing to speak against? There being none, the public hearing is closed, and we move now to the corresponding motion. Councilmember Hurley?
Mayor, I move that we approve ordinance 02001-060-15.
Councilmember Williams?
That's for a second.
Okay, councilmember Avery?
Madam's for a second.
Okay. Any further discussion on this item? If you would, register your vote, and it passes. Announcements and events, councilmember Williams?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I forgot while we're going to pre-council, bring something up. I know later on in the year, we're going to have a grand opening for one of our new parks that we've renovated, but I know probably in the next three or four weeks, there's probably going to be an item in there that's probably going to get to where it may be too cool to use it. And I know it's going to be hard to believe that anybody that's been outside today would believe that, but we have a new water. It's called a spray ground, sits up behind the Recreation Center. And if you get a chance sometime in the next couple of weeks, pull through there, and I don't know exactly how much money we'd spend on this, but whatever it was, it wasn't enough. The children are having a good time in there. I do want to remind people to keep their pets out of there, but adults or children, either one, are welcome to it, and it's called the spray ground, and it's getting a lot of use. I'd like for people to go by and look at it before it gets too cool to use it. And kudos to our park board and the park department for having that put in.
Thank you, councilmember Williams. Anyone else? There being none, we move to item number 27. Mr. Elfric?
Mr. Mayor, item number 27 is the first reading of an ordinance calling a bond election to be held in the city of Halton City. This bond election will be held on November the 6th, a general election date. And what it does is it's a stepping stone that began, a path that began back in March of this year, when the council appointed a citizens group, a citizens committee of about 16 people. These people met weekly and bi-weekly over about an eight-week period. They met and they discussed with different staff members what the facility and improvement needs were throughout Halton City. They spent a lot of time, a lot of hard work, and they engaged in some very difficult conversations amongst themselves with staff members and with our financial advisors to try and determine the best direction to go to improve facilities and services here at Halton City. They met finally and unanimously, they unanimously voted to present, to recommend rather, to the council, five items that will appear on this ballot in November. These five items are a $4 million proposal for street improvements, a $3.5 million proposal for a new central fire station, a $4 million proposal for a new library facility, a $4 million proposal for flood control improvements along Little Fossil Creek, and possibly if that particular item passes, there is also then an item on there for a $250,000 hike and bike trail along the creek. I would like to point out that the $4 million Creek project is one that will release, release from the flood plain in that area, 350 more properties that will no longer have to buy flood insurance, and these properties will also be then much more conducive to good commercial and possibly residential development. Also, I should point out that this $4 million for the flood control is our small portion of what I believe is a total of about $12 million that the federal government will be kicking in on this project. It is also the first park moving from the south to the north along this creek to prevent future floods in the city and protect the lives and property of our citizens.
Okay, gentlemen, you've heard the explanation by Mr. Elfric. I'll entertain a motion with regard to ordinance number 02001-032-01. Councilmember Markham?
Mayor, I move that we pass ordinance number 0-2001-032-01.
Councilmember Henderson?
That's for a second.
Councilmember Hurley?
That was for a second.
Okay, any discussion on the motion or any comment anyone on the council would like to make? Councilmember Williams?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I would like to disinform the citizens. Anybody who has any questions about this, feel free to call City Hall, and they'll give you answers you need on it. And it's some badly needed funds that we're asking for, so if you have any questions whatsoever and they want the right answers, call up here.
Begging your pardon, there's something else I should add, that the, all of these bond issues are predicated on the firm basis that there will be no increase in the ad v. lawrm tax rate. If we are not perfect prognosticators of what the future will bring, if it turns out that we are in a situation where one of these issues might cause a tax increase for years from now, our anticipation is that we would then not issue it at that time and hold it until conditions were more favorable.
Okay, I appreciate that clarification, that further bit of information. Anything else, gentlemen? There being no further comment, if you'll register your vote, the motion carries by unanimous vote. Item number 28.
Item 28, Mr. Mayor, is brought to the attention of the council as a result of legislation that was passed in the last state legislature whereby cities will be eligible to place on the ballot for our voters a quarter cent sales tax that would be dedicated to the maintenance of streets within the city, existing streets within the city. It would not be eligible to use for new streets. This sales tax would last for a period of four years, at which time it would sunset unless the voters passed it again on another general referendum. It is estimated that this sales tax will bring in a little bit less than $1 million per year. If passed, the impact in the next fiscal year is estimated to be about $220,000. And if passed, it would raise our total sales tax rate that we have as the local option to two and a quarter cents, which would be the limit, and it would also be commence, on par with the rate that I believe the majority of cities in this area have, which is a total tax rate, then of, sales tax rate of eight and a quarter cents.
I'll entertain a motion with regard to item number 28. Councilmember Henderson?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I've moved to approve ordinance number 02001-061-1.
Councilmember Jennings?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to second that particular motion, but I would like to state for the record that I for one would like to thank councilmember Henderson for bringing this item before the council. Councilmember Henderson has brought several good ideas before this council, and he's constantly thinking about the best interest of the city of Halton City. And one of the quotes that he used in one of our meetings earlier was that by doing this on a, on a quarter cent sales tax increase, then people outside of our city are helping pay for our streets. And I thought that that was some proud and progressive thinking on his part, and I'd just like to thank you for it.
Hear, hear. We do appreciate that. Any further comment, discussion? I'll call for your, cast your vote if you would at this time. Motion passes. We come now to item number 31. That is the Daisy Lane situation, and I would entertain a motion to table till the next council meeting. Councilmember Hurley?
Mayor, I move that we table this item until the.
Councilmember Jennings?
A second.
Gentlemen, cast your vote on the motion. And councilmember Henderson, did you want to vote on the motion?
Yeah, I will.
Okay, and the motion passes.
You missed the last time, why'd you vote this time?
Councilmember 30, item number 33 was placed on the agenda by Mayor Pro-Tim Williams. Mayor Pro-Tim Williams will entertain a motion from you with regard to item number 33.
I'd like to remove that item at this time until further notice.
Okay, we have a motion to remove? Do we have a second? Councilmember Henderson?
That's for a second.
Okay, if you would, gentlemen, register your vote. The motion passes. We come now to resignations of board members. I believe we do have a resignation tonight, gentlemen. I'll entertain a motion with regard to that resignation. Councilmember Williams?
Madam's, we approve the resignation of a board member. You want to mention name?
Uh, yes.
Mrs. Wyatt?
Ms. Gwen Wyatt.
Ms. Gwen Wyatt.
Okay.
She has left the city as a resignation. She's removing herself from the board.
Okay, councilmember Jennings?
That's for a second.
If you would, gentlemen, cast your vote to ratify this resignation, and the motion carries. Appointments to boards and commissions. Councilmember Jennings?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I would like to bring the name of Dr. William C. Anderson before the council for ratification as a member of the Animal Advisory Board. Dr. Anderson operates the Halton City Animal Hospital on Belknap Street, and he has graciously consented to step in and serve on this particular advisory board.
Okay, you've heard the recommendation. If you'll vote to ratify it this time, please. And the motion carries. Councilmember Williams?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I would like to make a motion that we appoint Nancy Watkins of Blue Circle in Halton City on the Animal Advisory Board. I think the city secretary has the address and if that is necessary.
Okay, you have heard the recommendation by Mayor Pro-Tim Williams to appoint Nancy Watkins to the Animal Advisory Board. If you would, gentlemen, register your vote for ratification. Councilmember Avery? Okay, the motion passes. Item number 36 is attendance requirements, and since all of us are here tonight, there's no need to take any action in that regard. So, the council will, will meet and close session at this time pursuant to Section 551.071, 073, and 074. And the time is nine minutes after nine.